You're recording also on you, on Zoom?
Uh, yeah, I, yes, I can hit record, I could just record to the cloud.
Recording in progress.
And we're also live on YouTube, Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six o'clock on June sixteenth. Our next Boris Selectman's meeting is June twenty-third at six P M., it's gonna be next door, not here. This is audio and video recorded. Uh, it'll be, uh, put on channel nine at some point in the near, very near future. It's also live on YouTube and it's gonna be a Zoom meeting also. So could everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first agenda item is, on the new business is review, discuss, and act on a host community agreement, Pure Oasis LLC. Did everybody have an opportunity to, uh, take a look at that agreement?
Yes.
And does anybody have any, uh, questions about that? This is, uh, very similar to the one that we, uh, signed the last time, but the difference is that this is just cultivation, it's not manufacturing, not making edibles or anything like that.
Uh, I'm not sure it's mm, a question, but more of a comment. I just wanted to, uh, give a kudos on the twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, upfront payment. I know it's deducted from the three percent, um, impact fee that's imposed, um, if we sign this on, uh, Pure Oasis, but I really appreciated that. It's in accordance with the other ones that we did, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Z.
If, yes, Selectman Hull.
I was just looking for an update in regards to whether or not this has gone before the planning board of the Z B A as of yet.
No, it, it hasn't.
Okay.
So normally, uh, because they're in the process of doing this, this is the host agreement. Obviously, if they don't purchase the building, they don't start the, the cultivation, that kind of stuff, this won't apply. Uh, but they still got several hurdles, uh, and, you know, Z B A is one of them, as well as the, the planning board. I don't know if there's any other committees, but, uh, so it has not gone in.
No, thank you.
It's gonna be sooner rather than later in the public, obviously will be notified, it'll be posted, as well as the abutis, uh, to sixteen-twenty Spring Street. So for the public, this is for sixteen-twenty Spring Street, this is, uh, the old Raytheon, it's been called. And, uh, there's a plan, uh-
Six-twenty, sorry.
Six-twenty.
Six-twenty, right?
Six-twenty. Six-twenty, Spring Street.
What did I say?
Sixteen.
Oh, actually-
That's someone's house, probably.
Play that take back. I swore I said six-twenty, but anyway, six-twenty, uh, Spring Street. And there's a group of people that want to cultivate marijuana there, not to manufacture, not to make any products out of it, but they're gonna cul- cultivate and they will sell it to different businesses, uh, around here and further away.
And not to sell it either?
Yeah, they're not selling, yeah, they're gonna sell it to, uh, as a wholesale item to other, uh, other, uh, dispensaries. And they, they also have a dispensary in Dorchester, so they'll be making the, growing the product here and then manufacturing it here and then operating to their, uh, dispensary, I believe it's in Dorchester. I'll entertain a motion now, if there's no further questions.
Before I make a motion, I do have one last question. Um, the annual payment of the community impact fee is doable, due and payable no later than ninety days from the close of the calendar year. Um, I assume that's once they're up and running, right?
Yes, yes, uh, y- y- uh, yeah, like the agreement is basically would commence when, I'm ac- I'm actually, when the company obtains, um, a license, um, and they're approved to begin operations by the cannabis, uh, uh, yeah, by the Cannabis Second Control Commission.
Okay.
So, yeah, like it would start then at that point, but they need to have this in place in order to go. So in order to go forward, uh, through the state and the state agencies as well, uh, it has to begin the planning, uh, you know, uh, like actually like a process with the planning board through the special payment process as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Selectman Hull, you had your hand.
Now, this twenty-five thousand dollar payment does not, or does include all permitting fees?
It's nothing to do with the permitting fees.
No.
So this, uh, they all ha- they have to pay, unless they're waived, all fees, they still expect along with paying real estate taxes, uh, personal, uh, personal taxes, they have to pay, uh, that twenty-five thousand separate, that's a part of that three percent. So if it comes out that they, at the end of a calendar year, they owe us a hundred thousand dollars, they've already given us the twenty-five thousand, so we're getting that upfront, this advantage for the, uh, for the time.
No, thank you.
So I'll still entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the host community agreement between the Town of Dayton and Pure Oasis LLC, uh, as presented and amended this evening.
Second. Second. Just so the public knows, they had a virtual meeting, uh, last Thursday, uh, that the public was invited to and people, a lot of people from the public asked questions about it, so, uh, the neighbors and so people know what's going on. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, uh, ask for a vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions, the ayes have it. The next item, uh, is review, discuss, and act on disclosure by non-elected municipal employee, Building Commissioner, uh, Jim Agia. We were giving a, uh, the skull, disclosure by, uh, Jim Agia, he's the building commissioner. And he, uh, has had some involvement with the, uh, and we'll discuss that as the next item, uh, with the library, it's the different possibilities, that we, we'll be doing with the library, leasing, building, whatever. And because he, uh, owns property in Dayton that may, uh, become, uh, property that we may lease, uh, he's bringing this to our attention that, uh, so we have three options. We can either, uh, allow, vote to allow him to proceed, we can vote to proceed up until the point that we, uh, have a R F P is put out, or we can ask that he recuse himself for the whole process. So, um, any questions from?
Uh, my on- my only question is, would the vote be, exclude him from the municipal building study committee? Or would this be strictly, uh, regarding the library?
I believe it's regarding the library, because there's no other, uh, conflict or whatever, if you wanna call it a conflict.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would anything else that that, uh, group is, uh, discussing?
I have no further questions.
Do you have any, uh, questions?
No, I don't.
So I'll express, uh, my, uh, personal feelings that-
Mm-hmm.
We oughta, uh, allow him to proceed with this process up until, uh, any point the R F P is put out. So we have three options, we can just, uh, let him proceed and fully participate in whatever process we're gonna do with the library. We can tell him that he gotta recuse himself, but he has nothing to do with it, or we can let him proceed until we get to the point where we got R F P out there. And if his business, he has a, a partner, if his business wishes to be, uh, one of those facilities that we may wanna consider, uh, he would recuse himself at that point. From any, uh, further discussion with us, the board on that issue.
Uh, can I give my personal opinion?
Sure.
I think the, the last choice is probably the best, just my personal opinion.
Yep.
Mr. J- Mr. Chairman, I support your recommendation.
My recommendation?
Yes.
So I will, uh, entertain a motion that we proceed up until the point that the R F P is, uh, put out.
I'll second that motion.
I'm gonna let you make the motion and I'm going to, uh, step down and second that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I'm happy to second it, you don't need to step down.
Any, uh, discussion?
No, no discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that Mr. Agia continue in his current capacity, serving on that task force, until the R F P process has reached, uh, been sent out.
Yep.
For the library, and I would second that.
For the library.
Yeah, the second. Any discussion on that, on that motion?
I have none.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Uh, the third, uh, item is the Dayton Library, uh, Public Library reopening update. Are you doing that or is, uh?
No, I don't mind speaking.
Okay.
If you want to start.
Yes.
You can.
Now that we gave you permission to talk.
Thank you, I, I, you know, just, I contacted the state because I felt my involvement was important for the townspeople, the taxpayers, and the library. Um, I feel passionate about certain things, that's one of the things that I'd like us to finally bring to the forefront and deal with, um, once and for all, so, thank you for allowing me to stay involved. Um, this discussion, I think, is gonna go beyond tonight, um, but I want you to know, um, in my absence last week, I watched the, uh, meeting. Um, I, I took the feedback, I think it was a great discussion, it was a good start to the dialogue. Um, but I also want you to know that the Building Needs Study Committee in no way was to say, this is the direction that we need to go. We wanted that to be a starting point, that included the, brought in the selectmen, and then opened up the dialogue between the, the committee, the selectmen, and the townspeople to figure out what Dayton needs to do to finally get this library situation figured out. So, um, although I, we did make a couple of recommendations, I think it's fairly fluid. Um, obviously, since then, we've acted, uh, uh, through the administrative mullin, we're seeing what other avenues were available. So, um, um, you know, I don't know how this is gonna play out, but I wanna, you know, have the dialogue, bring in the committee members so that they're, they can be heard as well, even though I authored the letter, it was the all voices that were on paper. So, um, and then debate it like, like professionals and figure out what the best thing for the town is and what the best thing for the library is. I can give you one update, though. Uh, the structural analysis of the primetime building was brought up. Uh, the structural engineer was three weeks out, I do know him, I called him, had a technical conversation with him. That building would be ruled out if we were to move books into it. So I don't see any reason for wasting taxpayer dollars, I feel comfortable with the discussion I had with him. So we can rule out that as an option, uh, for the library, if we wanted to bring the books there. One of the reasons we came up with the, um, presentation as was, as written, was that, um, we were very conscious of not fracturing the library anymore than it already has been. I think we really need to be conscious of that, uh, we've done that in the past. And I know when we moved some departments to Old Town Hall, there was discussion about fracturing government. Um, we're all on the same campus. But some of the, some of the solutions to the library, unless we really, really put our minds to this, is to separate the different, um, you know, services that they have. And I wanna be careful about that, because now we're taking them from a building they couldn't fit in to multiple buildings. And, uh, I, I just don't know how that's gonna work for logistics with the library, so. Um, that said, I know we can go on for hours about this, and I suggest we do. I just think that maybe this isn't the forum, we need to ma- maybe publicize it and-
And we need more information too.
Yeah.
So just so, so the public knows, the library, the Andrew Carnegie, uh, li- Public Library, Titans Public Library, will not be used as a library because it's not big enough, it's not safe. Uh, although we're going to put a new egress into the building, because it needs two egresses on the main floor, so that people can leave, uh, the building, uh, safely. And we're gonna have the bathrooms, uh, become, uh, handicap bathrooms, so the public can use those. Uh, but still, it won't be used as a library, it's just too small. It, and you may know already that, uh, the Mass Library Commission has prelim- preliminarily given us, uh, will give us four million dollars towards adding onto the, uh, Andrew Carnegie Library. And we would have, the town would have to match that, we're number eleven, they usually do two a year, so at some point, we're gonna come up for that. I'll speak for myself and not the rest of the board, I personally don't think that's a good idea. Even the plan they have for the, uh, the library, they, they say it's gonna be good for twenty years, so then we're gonna be stuck with a, they're gonna put, they're talking about putting a second floor, as well as expanding on the building a little bit. We still got the problems with the, the parking lot. I, my, I personally think we oughta, uh, build a new library. Having said that, we're in a situation that, uh, come, uh, just about Labor Day, I think the day is, uh, we're gonna, if we don't have a library set up somewhere in town, we're actually gonna lose our right to have a, a library. They'll stop us and we won't be able to go to any other library, the sales, uh, the sales, and go and use our cards here and go to, say, for example, the Somerset Library. Uh, so we're trying to find a temporary, uh, place for a library. Uh, one of the options was, we talked about it anyway, was primetime, which is not being used, uh, as you, some of you know that, we've had some elderly people go over there pre-pand- uh, pandemic, you know, people with, uh, Alzheimer's, and they would be, uh, stay there for the day, it was like a daycare, but we haven't opened it since the pandemic and we're not sure at what point we're gonna open it up. But in order for that to be used as a library, you have to, it has to be able to hold a hundred fifty pounds per square foot. So if I just stood in a square foot, it's gonna already be too much, and the books are heavy, as, you know, there's a lot of books. I asked the question, uh, last week, if we put less books over there, spread them out a little bit, and that's not a possibility, it has to still be that hundred fifty, so. The report that we just got tonight is that we can't go to, uh, primetime for the library. So now we're looking at other options, we're, uh, thinking about possibly leasing some, something in Dayton, uh, for the library. Uh, there's also that possibility of getting a, uh, it's not actually a trailer though, but it's-
It's a modular unit?
Modular unit, twelve by sixty at a reasonable, uh, price, would, we would be leasing that. And we're, we're checking in to see whether the CARES Act will cover that, at least for the first year, at least until the end of, uh, this, uh, calendar year, because the CARES Act ends after that, and then, this'll have to be voted on by the public, obviously. Uh, so those are the different options that, uh, that we have. So, yes, that's Selectman Hull.
In regards to discussions about whether or not we're going to, down the road, have a new building or remodel the old one, I strongly support a public forum to discuss the options and to present to the people cost breakdown. So they can be very much a part of the decision-making process.
That's sort of what I was alluding to by not getting into deep right now. I, I wanna, I wanna bring other committee members in, I want to invite the public in, and I wanna discuss it, you know, in a democratic fashion, the way it should be discussed.
Yeah, and if the, if, uh, number comes up for the library for the addition to the, uh, Andrew Carnegie, that has to be voted on by the, the residents. So we're not at that point, but I just thought, there's so many people here, I thought maybe they were interested in the library, so I would give them that information. So we're not voting on anything today, I'm just expressing, and I've said it for years, my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for the board. My pr- our personal opinion is that it's cheaper for the town of Dayton to build a new library, and it's ours. It's, it's a permanent building for us and it's not gonna expire in five, ten, or fifteen years. So we're not gonna be taking, yes, you were gonna say something, Mr. Agia?
No, the, the only question I had is, we're heading up to the end of the fiscal year and, uh, we had, um, discussed quickly the option of a modular building to house part of the library. Um, that discussion may have to happen quicker than, than the public forum.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are we, are we willing to do that, or, I mean, we're running out of meetings by the end of the fiscal year, so.
We only have one more.
Yeah.
We have one more, we could possibly have a second, but it's really towards the end of the, uh, end of the, uh, no, I mean, uh, I think probably, hopefully next week, we'll have an answer on the CARES Act, whether they would cover, uh, the modular.
Cause we're-
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yes, and at this point, one of the things, I mean, in terms of a modular, you know, that wouldn't be any type of, yeah, I think, longer term, oh, you know, um, oh, you know, like longer term, like, uh, opportunian solution in any way, shape, or form, that would really just get us to the Labor Day open date.
It would be, it would be a one-year solution from the date that it, uh, it's delivered.
Mm-hmm.
So we would only have it for one year. So the reason why I mention this is, um, the town administrator and I were brainstorming, um, in case the CARES Act does not come through and we can't use CARES Act funding. And one of the options that I put on the table was, at the end of the year, we had a spending freeze, we're gonna end up with a lot of accounts that have additional funds in them, then maybe we could do a year-end transfer to pay for this, because the cost was fairly reasonable. Um, I think with the utility connections, it was gonna be a little less than forty thousand dollars. Um, and that's for a one-year lease.
Right.
So, you know, I, I hate to miss the opportunity if CARES Act doesn't come through, and being that June thirtieth is around the corner, we may wanna have that discussion at the next meeting, albeit outside of the public forum, but at least we can maybe get the funds allocated, so if we decide to go that route, we, we, um, we can pay for it.
Selectman Hull.
I just wanted to, to clarify, when I said a public forum, it was not for the temporary-
Okay.
-relocation, it was for what we're going to do-
A long-term purpose.
At the end of year one, when we need a building, whether it be the old one remodeled or a brand-new one.
Right. Okay.
I have a library trustee here, do you wanna make any comment on this? We're not making a decision tonight, but I presented the options that we-
No, I'm sorry, I came in late, but, um, it sounds like continued effort to solve the initial problem and, you know, I, I agree, uh, Mr. Hull, that, uh, public forum on plans for the future of the library are important. We're certainly committed to that.
So, uh, the question I have then is, when that year is up, we don't have an option to lease that for additional year?
That would be as to whether it's available or not after one year, but they'll only lease in one year increments, um, at least that's what I was told.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess if we want it for a longer term, they're gonna ask for more money upfront, so.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah. Yeah, right now, we're looking to, to have CARES covered, so they're not gonna care, uh, they're not going to cover more than, I didn't mean to care. Uh, they're not gonna cover it for longer than a year, because the funds are gonna run out in December or anything. They would, hopefully, they would provide us with the initial money for the first year anyway.
So one of the reluctantlys I have with, with, with longer than a year is, um, as Selectmen's Graph has said last week, modulators, trailers tend to become permanent, and I would hate to see that happen, especially since in order to do that, we're gonna fracture the, the department and the library's gonna be fragmented. So I think if, if that gets us a year and we can have two locations, I think a lo- a bigger discussion needs to be, when and if we can get a shovel in the ground, and what do we do after the year to get us to that point? We won't be building a library in a year, I can guarantee that.
What?
But, but if we have some sort of, um, plan, then maybe we can say, okay, after the one year, do we have another short-term plan that puts the library back together while we're getting this new library off the ground?
So I think that, and I know this is preliminary, but if we could get CARES to pay for anything to offset, you know, like the taxpayers funding a temporary solution, I think that that's a plus.
Agreed.
Um, and then, you know, we could figure out the second year and the third year, because I think we're, what, twelve?
We're eleven and twelve and, but they're not even accepting new applications, and we're eleven and twelve to add to the-
Correct.
The Li- Andrew Carnegie, and I don't think that, I don't think that, uh, taxpayers are gonna support that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I know I don't support it, so.
I get that.
I think it's, I actually believe it's cheaper to build a new library than eight-
And renovate it?
Eight million dollars.
On that site? Yeah, that's not a, that's not a good site to-
It's not, it's not a good site, and even on this grant that we've supposedly were eligible, unless we do something on that site, we have to start the process again, and I was, and at the meeting last week, they're not even accepting applications now.
Right.
And if somebody, uh, some town's been given, uh, a grant more than twenty years ago, they're able to reapply again for additions or whatever, so that numbers of town suppliers even are to increase, so.
So the only reason I, I suggested using taxpayer funds, or at least appropriating taxpayer funds before the end of the year, is if CARES Act doesn't come through, now we need to wait until all, unless past, um, uh, we get that.
And we lose a library, yeah, yeah, we can't do that either. Yeah, it's a rock and a hard place, I just think that, I think it's attractive to have CARES fund that first year, we can figure it out in the, because the other thing is, you've, uh, said quite honestly, is that, um, they're not accepting new applications, so we can't, if we wanted to, if the public had, if there was support, let's say we had the forum, as Selectmen Hull wants to, and I support that as well, and I think it's a good idea, we still can't submit an application, and, you know, there's no, even if the, the project is really attractive, more attractive than the renovation project, I think that there's a chance that we're on a waiting list again.
Right.
Um, and even if we were number one, that still is gonna take, you know, the police station, look, that was a long process, it didn't-
Right.
-happen quickly, and so we should be honest with people, the temporary solution is gonna be a few years. And I think we need to be honest, and I think that that's what's transparent here, so.
Right, so the Building Needs Study Committee is gonna reconvene, even though we just had one meeting, um, last week where I wasn't present, the feedback from you was great, the new information about primetime is also helpful, so we intend to have a, a, another discussion based on all the facts that we have to date. And when it comes time, we'll certainly meet again before the public forum, but I think there are some options available to us to deal with that problem, because it is a problem, so. So we'll, we'll be fully engaged with you about that, and thank you for allowing me to stay involved. I think it's a benefit to the taxpayer and the whole situation to have me involved, so, thank you.
You're the facilities manager.
So, do you think we'll be able to vote on this, uh, at the next, uh, next meeting, Boris Selectman's meetings?
Uh, yes, yes, I'm gonna follow up with A and F, uh, by the end of this week, uh, to see if they've had time to digest any of the information we sent over. Um, and then Mr. Agia said, I'm actually mentioning, I think at, I think at this point, uh, for the meeting on the twenty-third anyhow, we were already planning, um, on proposing transfers to the Board of Selectmen. Um, and already, we had a financial meeting, uh, this afternoon, uh, you know, to try to identify areas, uh, you know, where we might be able to fund that thirty thousand dollars from. Uh, like, so we'll be ready, just in the event, as a contingency, to have that funding ready to be proposed in the event that we don't, um, actually have, um, a good answer, or like an answer that we would hope for from the state.
So we'll put it on the agenda for, uh, next, any further discussion on this?
No, no, thank you.
The next, uh, agenda item is the minutes, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, ju- just so you know, I did have some, uh, uh, a minor, uh, correction on it that you may not have seen.
Okay.
It was on a Selectmen's report, I gave a report on the, uh, it's not the Community Garden, but the James Briggs Garden, it's gonna be next door.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it said that, uh, Mr. Agia was there, it wasn't, it was, uh, actually, uh, Mr. Ferry that was at the meeting, so that's been corrected, so just so you- full disclosure, that's been a change in it.
Sounds good.
Uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Uh, public input, just before the public gets to speak, I just wanted to, uh, the three of us attended the, uh, Historical Commission's Boston Post King that was given to the family of Maria Barbosa, and it was present, it was a very good, uh, presentation. I wanna thank the members of the, uh, Historical Commission, we happen to have a couple members here, but, uh, Pat Gales, who's the chairman, Pat Olson, Pamela Nicholson, Gail Salvi, who is here, and, uh, Raffa, who is also here, and Bill Crowe, who is not here, but they did a, a great job. And Pam and myself and my wife, we went to the Barbosa farm after, they had a little celebration with their family. And, uh, they were very impressed with the, the presentation, so, uh, I know we're gonna do it, or you're gonna do it in a couple of weeks, so you gotta hype on now to, but they, uh, the family was very supportive, as you may not know, but there was probably forty, forty-five people there, some town officials, uh, but the, the family was well, uh, represented. Uh, Maria Barbosa was our oldest person in town, and she, um, she passed away before we actually able to do the presentation, but she was aware, uh, that we were presenting her, we did it to the, with the family, with the Boston Post Kings. So I just wanna thank the, uh, Historical, uh, Commission for the hard work they did. Uh, public input. Is there any public input?
In that library situation, uh, the current location in the building, um, if we end up with a new location and they sell that property, like, that would put some money toward the project, wouldn't it?
Yes, but it's, it's an historical building, and I, quite frankly, I'd be opposed to, uh, selling that building. I, the town will use that building, the town will use it for something, whether it's a department or something. Uh, but I don't know what the, the, I don't know what the board feels, I don't know what the public feels, but it would be a shame to, uh, uh, get rid of the Andrew Carnegie, uh, building.
And it's not, um, it's not a, from the sounds of it, it doesn't sound feasible to get the four million and then the matching to renovate that space?
Well, they, uh, the plan is, they presented a plan, it's to expand the building a little bit and put a second floor on it. It, it destroys the whole design of that building, quite frankly. And I saw somewhere, and I may be wrong, but it was good for twenty years, and why, you know, it's, that's a very small spot, parking is limited, and I, I wanna support, I actually think the town can, uh, spend less money, because we would be obligated to pay four million dollars, and don't forget, this, these are figures that were given to us a few years ago. If anybody's bought, uh, a two-by-four, the price has almost tripled, so the expense, uh, may go up, but I actually think that we can build a better building.
And what would be the appro- I know it's not in stone, but approximate cost of a new sustaining building beyond the twenty years?
I don't know, but I think the, for example, the police station, which is a lot more detailed as far as equipment and stuff that they had to have in there, uh, was four and a half million dollars, so I think we can build a, a similar building. We don't, obviously, or maybe we do, but, uh, we won't have jail cells and we won't have that kind of stuff, but, uh-
We hope not.
We hope not. Uh, but we won't have all those, uh, little rooms, and it's, it's all separate, you know, it's divided and put, you know, it has- protection for the employees over there and that kind of stuff, we won't necessarily need that for a library, but, uh, my gut feeling is it's gonna be cheaper just to build a new library.
Yeah, it would be a shame to lose the sales, because that connects us with all the libraries.
Exactly.
That's, that's the important thing, we, yeah, yeah, and, uh, so did we.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we went to Somerset a lot, uh, and we, even if that was to open as a, a library now, we can't do, use the basement, we can't use the, the second floor, just that main floor, and we can only fit so many people in there, so it's really not a good option for us. And the, uh, fire chief and the police chief have both said it's not, uh, safe for us, uh, to open it up as a library, so that's why we unfortunately have this option, uh, we have to look at these, uh, different options, but, uh, I see, yeah, I see, as, uh, Mr. Agia said, leasing is a temporary solution, it's not gonna be, we need to own the building. The Town of Dayton deserves to have its own library, and we shouldn't be obligated to pay somebody else annually. and we shouldn't be obligated to pay somebody else annually. You wanna say something, Mr. White?
Um, so the, the building as it is now, what, I'm worried about this because it's not gone yet, but what are some of the potential uses for it if we kept it and didn't sell it?
I, I guess I can express my, uh,
I'll give mine now.
uh, personal feelings. I think the veteran agent could be over there. I think the maybe possibility of, I'll say it in front of the building commission, the building department to be over there. Uh, it's, you know, the public will be able to go, you know, for this, the public will be well aware of what that building is for, so that instead of going over here or going, coming over here, they'll know where to go for certain services, so, uh, but it can be utilized. They could, I'd, I'd be so opposed to, uh, selling it, and I don't think we'll get the money that, uh, I think that, you think that we'd, uh, be able to, or somebody mentioned that we'd be able to get, so. Mr. Agar?
So there's a plan in place right now to, uh, put an accessible ramp, excuse me, on the building and an accessible restroom in the building. Right now the restroom is, is fractured, the, uh, toilet facilities are in, in a closet, the hand wash sink is in the hallway. So it's just, you know, it served its purpose long ago, um, but, you know, that library has far outlived its, its, um, its usefulness there. The building, however, as was said, is a Carnegie building. We're the stewards of that building, and we, we're responsible for making sure it's here for generations to come. So I think by moving them out, getting the building so it's accessible, repairing some of the things that are deficient on it, we'll open it up for, for more use and, and more valuable use. And I think more people, not that the library isn't prequited, but I think if it were another bill, another town service, more townspeople would be able to appreciate the building for what it is.
And a town always looks towards the, the future. You know, we have the Old Town Hall, it's called Old Town Hall, uh, next door to Spolton, uh, eighteen sixty-nine. Instead of adding onto this building here, we utilize that space over there, we're expanding space here, we've done changes upstairs, the, uh, the Board of Selectmen, we had a meeting room upstairs, it's no longer there, we're, we meet over there now, we use it after the town accounts. So we, we always look towards the future as to how we can use these buildings, rather than just build a building. The library is different. We, we just can't, I don't see this a feasible solution to add onto the, uh, Andrew Carnegie, you know.
When the Building Needs and Study Committee was doing their diligence, there's an annual report from nineteen twenty, I believe, that said the library had already outlived its, its space. This was a hundred years ago. They're still talking about it today, so, um,
I remember that when that, that report came out, so I do, I do.
You do remember that, yeah.
I guess they were wrong then. I guess the minute you get the same time of year, it's.
It's the same time, yeah. So, so nonetheless, I mean, you know, anybody who's visited a library sees that it's very constrained and certainly not accessible. Um, and it's, you know, even for the staff, you know, they've sacrificed a lot through the years just dealing with the, uh, inefficiency and deficiencies of the building, but I think it's time that we have a healthy discussion and figure it out. Thanks.
Well, I'm gonna let, uh, Selectman Hall speak first.
Well,
What's that?
I hear some wonderful ideas. As a taxpayer and as a representative of people, I hear people that are very concerned about their pockets and their bank accounts and their tax rate. What I would really like to see the task force come up with is two plans. Plan A, remodeling that facility and what it will cost. Plan B, a new facility. And let the taxpayers decide what they want, because they're the ones that are gonna be paying the bill.
Sure.
Just to clarify that, so when that, when our number comes up, whenever that is, could be three or four, five years down the road, it goes before, it'll go before the townspeople, and they'll get the vote on it, but I agree with you, we should also have a second option. So it can't be just reject my position, is reject this, we need to have something else there.
Yes, that's why I say plan A.
If we're gonna reject this, then let's do this, so.
We have to.
Yeah.
Because we can't wait, I mean, it'll be ten years before.
Oh, yeah. Ultimately, this isn't the study committee's decision to make. We're just gonna give them the facts, and then the people will decide what the fate of the library is. But it's, it's up to us to make sure that people are well informed, so, I agree.
I'd, I'd love to know.
I just like to add that in two thousand, I was on the Library Building Committee to build a new library. That was twenty-one years ago, and we're still talking about it. And we're still hearing the same objections we heard twenty-one years ago. And the sad reality is, it's gonna cost a heck of a lot more money today to build a new one than it would have twenty-one years ago.
And we had some, uh, at that time, we had some donations, uh, Gee Lopes was gonna do the foundation for us, and we had some other donations.
Yeah, I think, I, I just think that's a really timely point, and I remember you brought up something earlier, and I thought it was also a really good point about the folks who built libraries twenty years ago are now eligible for more grants. We could have been one of those towns that did something twenty years ago and is doing something now, um, and, and potentially saved money, so. Um, but our job is to give everyone the facts, the options, and doing nothing is an option, it really is. Um, but it comes with ramifications, as Mr. White brought up, where we lose our sales certification, and, and anyone who uses the library knows how valuable that is, 'cause Dyton Public Library unfortunately isn't big enough to have a lot of the books or a lot of the media materials that people seek, so, um, but I agree with Selectman Hall, we should gather that data or the building, uh, Study Committee would gather that data, give everyone the three options, the renovation, a new library, or, you know, do nothing. We're, we're probably gonna do this temporary solution regardless.
Yeah.
But, um, and then see where it shakes out.
Yeah, that's what we'll be voting on in the near future, just a temporary solution. Sir?
Um, Tom Gulucci, um, we, we're talking about public money and that kinda thing, as if it comes from, you know, here, or it does come from us, and so you're right, we have to be good stewards of that. Has anyone thought to go to Carnegie Foundation? They're the ones who gave us the eight thousand dollars back in, uh, what, nineteen oh eight to build it. Has anyone, like, actually contacted the Carnegie Foundation? Which by now are just still extended.
Yeah, I, that's news to me if it is, but I'll take your word for it that it is.
They, they throw money at, you know, they've got the five oh one C three, they're throwing money. Uh, I think WQED in Pittsburgh is the local public, um, you know, PBS station, so that's one of those things where there might be some sentimental value, because I kind of agree with you again. That I, you know, don't wanna see the building disappear, you know, and it's not just sentiment, there's a, there's a, whatever you wanna call it. There's continuity to it and everything. I, I'd like to see that stay there. I live pretty close. Um, but I don't wanna spend a heck of a lot of money, and I don't know where we're gonna get four thousand dollars from.
Four million?
Four million, I'm sorry. Just thinking of something. But, you know, you can dig up, because we have, um, police cursors that could be repaired, fixed. We have, uh, fire engines that need to be fixed. We have a, a lot of other needs in this town that we need, you know, and, um, a library is one of those things, it's nice to have, it's, it's awesome, it's a sign of civilization, but we have some more pressing needs right now. So that was, that was my only thought on that. If we could, you know, uh, approach the Carnegie Foundation maybe?
That is a good idea.
Yeah.
I didn't know it existed, so it's good, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I, I agree with Mr. Gulucci, um, and, and you as well. Um, I think that regardless of what happens with the library going forward, um, that building was a gift. Um, it is historic, um, it's beautiful, and I think that it's something that brought the community together, that's why the library is there. Um, and if we could keep that building something that is community-based, and I'm not talking about expanding services, that's not what I mean. I just mean like a, a community center, a place where the community can go, maybe not so much, uh, in my opinion, uh, like a department building. I think we've split, um, departments enough and gotten the feedback about it too. Um, but if we could keep it a community-based building, that would be my preference.
Yeah, the other option, and maybe it's because I'm a senior, but a possibility of a senior center too, that people get together and.
That has been brought up by residents.
I'll include you in that group too.
Conflict.
I won't point to anybody else here, but there's a few. Any other, uh, question? Yes, Ra- Raffa?
Um, has anybody thought about maybe, um, the Mount Oak building, the old mill? There's plenty of space right there. Is it possible maybe to purchase, like, a sizable amount of that empty building and join into modern Dyton Public Library? There's plenty of apartment space.
Yeah, it, is it, uh,
So I think here Oasis bought the entire building, um, and they're gonna cultivate and then also rent, that was part of the HCA tonight. So I don't think that, I think their intent, I shouldn't, we can ask them, I wanna be very clear, but I think their intent was to lease the space out to the, to other cultivators, is what I was, but you've worked with them much closer.
What was that? Well, it's, uh, what's the tax revenue? So I mean, that's, we, you know, we're talking about taxes, we're talking about spending money for libraries. This is one source of, uh, revenue for the, for the town.
And we get the, we get the three percent impact fee on the sales if we negotiate it into the HCA, which everyone has had that in there that we have negotiated. Plus you get, you know, the real estate tax, the property taxes and all that, so. It, it is a boom.
Selectman Hall?
Raffa, the concern that I have about that, that it may complicate the approval process with the planning board and with ZBA and regards to if you put the library up there so close to marijuana, with children coming into that building that they may be opposed to passage of that. Pure Oasis, you know, we talk about the tax revenue, but we're also talking about the potential of four hundred jobs. And that will have an impact on this community as well. Um, I caution people, Pure Oasis is not a done deal. It still has to get by a planning board, and it still has to get by ZBA. Um, so there's still work to be done and salesmanship to be done.
And Pure Oasis is gonna, uh, hire mostly Dightonians, so that's their preference. And, uh, they will hire, uh, people who have, uh, been arrested for marijuana dealing drug, I'm just, that's just because they were penalized years back. You know, I worked in probation for thirty-five years, uh, people were put on probation, some people were put in jail because of marijuana, so now they're trying to reverse that because it probably should've been, might be able to tell from here, uh, that it probably should've been legal years ago, so, uh, it's, there's, there's gonna be employment from Dightonians, which is great. Not only, you know, it's, it's revenue for the town, but it's also putting some people to work, which is a great opportunity for Dyton. But that's, that's the way down the road.
I think those are all good points, um, but I also want to add that business gets business, so I think the more jobs that we create in Dyton, then the more likelihood that you'll have restaurants and other places that wanna open up. This is just my crazy idea, um, in service those influx of people who maybe no longer have to go to Boston for work, can go to, you know, or Providence or wherever, can now work close to home, so, like it used to be with the old Raytheon and ICI.
Yeah, ICI. And Selectman Hall?
Um, Dr. C, i- in response to that, um, we have a committee that is dormant now, the Business and Development Corporation, and I'm hoping in the meetings to come that be able to get your support, Mr. Pajicco's support to work on revitalizing that committee.
Absolutely. And not just that committee, but also the Development and Industrial Commission, which is more of a, a marketing committee.
Yes, that's, yeah, thank you.
Any other, uh, public input? Is there any public input on?
There's something in there.
Uh, so, yeah, uh, there was, um, a little bit of input, uh, from a, from a user, Nancy Mack. Um, and just wanted to clarify, uh, there, that there will be four hundred jobs total. Uh, that Pure Oasis discussed hiring a hundred additional employees from the community.
Yes, the, yeah, I, I heard, uh, I heard that they're gonna hire a hundred, I didn't, I don't know about the four hundred, but, uh, I think all the, all the employees that they hire, other than, uh, management, they're gonna be preference for Dightonians if they qualify and in the agreement that we just voted on, if somebody's from Somerset and somebody's from Dyton, they both have the same qualifications, the Dightonians are gonna get the job.
And that's enshrined in the agreement that we signed and both parties agreed to.
Uh, Mr. White?
How about security, um, around the facility? I'm sure that's gonna be the type of facility that people are gonna want into that don't belong in there. Um, how are we gonna, uh, make sure that we've got adequate security?
Well, they, they, I think at how many cameras they, they have to have, but it's, uh, it's fully secured, and so if they're growing marijuana here in the building, there's gonna, it won't be like a windows here to the public, so it's gonna be inside the building somewhere. And it's gonna be security cameras, uh, the police department has to be involved in that, the police department has a right to look at those cameras. Uh, so I, I think it's gonna be, uh, very secure.
The special permit process from the planning board addresses all of that. So they're great questions, and our planning board has been fully engaged with making sure that's part of their conditions of their special permit, so.
And that, they have to have a, they have to have like an actual security plan, and I think
Yes, in the agreement that.
the DPD needs to, I think the chief of police has to go in there and like sign off on everything. I think the public should also remember that part of the reason why this, not just this board, but the board with, um, Selectman Gular as well, had been supportive of the three percent impact fee is in case something happens and you have to have more police presence or police have to go out, um, due to calls or things like that. So it's, and I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm just saying it's in anticipation of things like that, even though it's a business and not a family that's going to, you know, for example, send a, a child to school, which is a, a cost to the taxpayers. Um, so there, we're anticipating things like that as well, as best that we can.
So the revenue being used to pay the employees, are marijuana, um, uh, facilities allowed to put money in banks? There was a period of time, has that been rectified, or do they have to deal in a cash business? What's, what's the current situation?
That's been flushed out, I think.
Has it been flushed out on?
It's easier, I wouldn't say it's completely flushed out.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything different.
Money from this, because not all, the, the banks are, are, are FDIC insured.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And the rules were that your state can do something, but the banking commission would not allow deposits from that type of, um, money.
Federally. Mm-hmm.
So if that's been flushed out, then it's easy to make payroll for the people who are trying to pay.
Yeah, I, I thought I, I saw some bank, and I think it was just a Massachusetts bank that was lending them money or having some accounts, but I'm not positive of that. I can't remember the name of that bank.
I, I have an answer. Um, I spoke with an attorney, there's one bank in the area, local area, that is dealing with marijuana facilities. But you're right, it's very.
Are they federally insured bank?
They are.
Yeah, federal government's allowing it?
Yes, yes. And that was, I, I questioned him on it, 'cause I, I heard the same thing you did. And there's only one bank that's large enough to do it in this area, so that's what they're all dealing with.
I'm a licensed financial advisor, and I'm not allowed to put, uh, clients into those types of, uh, investments.
Yeah, you can't, you're right, they all, they seek private funds for investments, but the actual banking, the payroll or whatnot, there's one bank in the area that's doing it.
In Colorado, for years they were paying people with cash on, on their payday, and they had a big vault in there, and that was another security issue.
Right. Right, they would, I'm not sure what they feared more, people stealing the marijuana or people stealing the money, but, uh.
Well, the cartels were coming in, 'cause they didn't wanna be in competition.
Did you, Mr. Chairman, is it okay, uh, we had had a conversation earlier and you had said that, um, you know, it's impossible to anticipate expenses and things like that that may arise from, um, the business opening? But that we would monitor
Yes.
things like, you know, um, okay, the police are going out a lot, or the fire department and things like that. So did you wanna, just for the public, 'cause we had a couple of questions about it?
So yes, in the three percent, in the three percent, I mean, what the three percent envisions is any type of additional, um, like additional enforcement activities, like from inspection, from police, uh, like from any public safety. Uh, like any type of additional, uh, any type of additional town efforts that we would, uh, you know, as a town have to provide, uh, would be included in the three percent. Uh, like, one of the things, I'm actually happening in other communities across the state right now is there's a lot of scrutiny. I'm on exactly what, I'm exactly, exactly what type of expenses are included in the three percent. Uh, actually practically speaking, uh, like in what a lot, uh, like in what a lot of, and what a lot of cities and towns are having to do now is trying to quantify, uh, like exactly what, exactly what type of expenses are made up. Oh, you know, like in the first, second, and third year, like in the three percent to quantify that. Uh, like in hopes, I mean, if, uh, like if Pure Oasis is ever, I'm in fact up and running, you know, this, oh, oh, yeah, the agree, the agreement approved this evening is for five years. Uh, like, and the expectation is after the five years, all parties would really know the true costs. Uh, like in, oh, in any future agreement, any future agreement would recognize, oh, you're like, and better reflect any. Uh like in, oh in any future agreement, any future agreement would recognize, oh you're like in better reflecting a true cost that the oh you know, our community really faces and has to deal with as a result.
Yes.
Is there a model that work, that they are using to come up with the amount of money that they think that's going to equal to over those five years?
Uh you know, uh you know, um in terms of um, I'm in terms of a model, the model is really the three percent, but every.
No, I mean, but what is it equal, what is after, do, with all of these?
Uh yeah, like in terms of a projection, yeah, like they don't actually know that yet because uh the market is still evolving.
What is it equal? Not a blind projection, not a blind projection, but they, with, going back fi- from now to five years, what is, what is the model for that come to?
Yes.
What is those figures equal?
Well, we don't know, but only because.
No, I'm saying the company though.
Yeah, the company, because they're starting off small and they hope to expand, they're gonna get other companies that.
So they don't have anything like this that's.
No.
They only have a, yeah, they have a registered marijuana dispensary.
Dorchester.
Yeah. That's a dispensary.
Yeah, they, but they don't cultivate it, I don't think.
So, correct, so they want this site to help support their operation in Dorchester, um which makes sense, where, where a sm- quiet town, you know, it's not Dorchester. Hopefully there's less crime obviously here, so.
Yeah, I think they talked about uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they were gonna use a hundred thousand square feet to grow marijuana. There's another company that is interested, it'll come also before us and will have a similar agreement, that will also be called the, to grow marijuana there, so they hope to expand.
Mm-hmm.
None of the businesses there are gonna ever be thrown out, so they, those businesses that are there, they could continue uh being there, but they, it's, I think, is it a half a million square feet, something like that, that they're building, so they have a
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
great potential uh for, for that, and the town has a great potential for revenue.
That, you, that, you know, that's actually one of my concerns, and it would be nice, I think, if we could have a stipulation in there as far as um a gradual timeframe, because since we don't have any concrete figures, because they don't, they've never done this before.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna have their business, you're saying, and I heard them say too, they're going to have another, uh we go a certain amount of years, a certain timeframe before, they can't just like all of a sudden have another one, another one, another one, and you know what I mean, it's like not. Or do we not have anything to say on that, the town, the town of Dayton, I mean.
Well, they, we would be signing a host uh agreement with whatever new company comes in for, for leasing, so right now, we just made the agreement with Pure Oasis, who's talking about a hundred thousand square feet, and quite frankly,
Right.
they may start off with fifty thousand square feet, but they, the potential for them is a hundred thousand square feet and then they will expand with.
But it seemed like they actually, if I heard correctly, they had like two or three other, other businesses that were actually interested in coming and doing the same thing that they're doing.
Yeah, yes, in a small scale, but.
And, and I'm saying, maybe like, let's keep a lid on it, you know, for the first couple of years, see, see how much police uh we need, see how much, you know, just so we know, what is this actually co- are we doing better with them? Financially, are we breaking, you know what I mean, as opposed to them getting another one and another one, like see what happens, get them and then maybe one other.
Yeah, well, it's three percent on their gross sales, whenever they sell their product to another business. I think uh, my personal feeling is, is that it's, it's gonna be difficult for us to prove the three percent, because it's a lot of different things, uh so I don't think we're gonna.
That's why I say it'd be nice to see like literally facts and things on paper, once they get those.
Well, we know what we, we, what we can look at, so, so if we have somebody here in the office here who's actually keeping track of the expenses that the town, that person while they're doing that gets that's part of the uh the three percent, uh that we'll be asking for, it's the police, it's the fire, I can't, you know, who knows, but I, I don't think it's, I think we're gonna be able to get.
I'm just saying, like, s- put, put the brakes on a little bit, that's what I'm saying.
I see this, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, my personal feeling is, and I'm not talking with the board, we need to bring revenue into town, I see it all the time on Facebook and everything else, when I bring businesses in. We're not forced to smoke the marijuana, not forced in anything like that, it's gonna be taken out of town, it's gonna go.
I would, could be any businesses, I'm not, I'm not singling out marijuana in the way they're running the business, however, if you wanna like talk about marijuana, but one thing that does concern me concerning marijuana is, they were asked a few times in their um, um info
Yeah.
thing that they did a couple of weeks ago, what do they plan on doing as far as a filtration, um HVAC type system for odor? And I really didn't get, again, any actual specific unit that they're using, name that they're using, and the efficiency and the actual outcome, that this is success, it's been used here and it's here is, you know, it's, it's certain percentage clear.
Yeah, I heard.
So, again, I think it'd be nice for them, not nice, I mean, they should know exactly what system they're getting put in, part, all of that has to do with if, like you, the townspeople kind of give them the green light upon, you know, those are things with that they have to satisfy, correct?
Well. Yes, but that, the, the commi- the grant, uh the, it's the planning board that will actually give them the permit for this, so it's not us to make that decision. Obviously, we don't want odor to be an issue, and if you remember from that, uh it was, I believe it was last week, they had two options, but they didn't say which one they were gonna use.
Right, and they said it might not, this one might not work that well, and maybe, so that, it's just when you start getting into may, maybe, maybe not.
What they did say. But, but what they did say was that the consultant that they hired has experience in this field, and they're gonna listen to the consultant, so that whatever mistakes they've made in the past, the consultant said, this filtration system doesn't work, this is the one that we're gonna go with. Obvi- obviously, I, I can't speak for the board, but we're not, we're not gonna tolerate odor coming from uh, from over there, uh quite frankly, so I understand it.
But it is the planning, it is the planning board that would impose that as like a condition on any special permit, and they, I just wanna be clear, they are completely independent from us, they are, they run their own elections, they are their own elected officials, so they would impose those conditions and, and I would assume they would have a public hearing
They're elected.
um that night when they were gonna vote and everybody could come that was interested in, and I think that that's a good point, I think that's fair. Um, we don't want it to smell, obviously, and if they're not gonna be the only ones over there, I think it's very fair to, to say that.
Uh actually, uh we had a town up for us.
I just, I just had a real quick question, um what kind of oversight beyond the department of revenue and their tax returns, does the town of Dayton have over the books of this company?
Yeah.
To ensure that we're actually getting three percent.
Yeah, I know, I think it was, they're gonna have to give us an annual report, that we all get the opportunity to, to take a look at.
Okay.
Uh, we gotta, I'm gonna say trust, uh trust and ver- verify, Mr. White.
That's, the verify part's important.
Yeah.
You know, knowing our history is, is important, but we don't believe in mistakes, but I remember the gas company that was making up electricity. And for a long time, we got, you know, pretty good money from them on an annual basis, under no firm obligation, and then that all came to an end. So I just wanna be sure that we don't go into this blindly and remember how that can actually go
Yeah, and that was.
against what we thought we were gonna get.
Right, if I remember correctly, it was a ten-year agreement, a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh not geared for anything, so the town actually, I actually think it was the board of Sluckman decided where that money was gonna go. So I'm not uh too crazy about, uh so, uh this is a five-year agreement, and then it gets renewed and uh, like Mr. Muller, our town administrator, said that we'd get to see exactly what we've had to use for expenses, we, we, I don't believe we can, we can go higher than three percent, that's state.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's the ceiling, yep.
That's the max.
So we, we go with the highest figure, hopefully we can show that it's, uh, we've used that three percent, if not, it's gonna be a little less, but that, that would be our goal. Any other questions? Can you go up to the next item, uh minutes, uh last but most.
Is there anything on there just before we move on?
Let me see, it's Chuck.
Uh yeah, um, I am sorry, like we're in public comment at this point, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, uh so we do have, um a hand, uh from Jaz, uh from, from Jaz and Tavaris, our library director.
Okay.
And I'll ask, um, I'll ask her to unmute so she can speak. Jazla, Mr. Vares.
No, I was, I, I don't really need to say anything, the conversation had shifted away from the library, so I didn't wanna bring it back.
Okay.
When um it has already shifted, so it can wait.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vares.
Thank you, Mr. Vares. So we'll go to the next item, minutes, approval of the, well, we already did that, public input, we're gonna go into executive session, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section One Twenty-One A Three. Three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair, so declares, I declare, in negotiations with the Dayton Police Officers, Mass, COP, COP Three O C. We will not be coming back into a public meeting, so we're gonna have, go into executive uh session, and um that will be it uh for the night, so I'll entertain, motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Uh, we're going to have public input?
We, we have, we just have public in, input.
We have a couple more things we wanna do.
Do I think I, okay.
I'll retract my motion.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I had asked if there's any more public input, there wasn't any.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, is there more?
Not on that topic, not on the topic that we were on.
Yeah, okay. Any public input on anything else?
Is this, is this anything?
Anything.
Yes.
Uh, I see the police are here, I, I live on Forest Street, in the troublemaker area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, the firing range, uh you know, it was missing Vietnam there, I thought it was back in Vietnam.
Mm-hmm.
Two days, just, that gun range was crazy.
Mm-hmm. When was this, if you don't mind me asking?
Is, is that recent?
Yeah, this week.
I usually hear it when it's like that, and I didn't. We were.
We were, we were in the, uh, working in the yard.
Uh-huh.
Two days, just going and going and going.
Didn't we ask uh a while ago that?
And we called, we called the police station, and they said they had leased this gun.
Mm-hmm. We have an agreement with them that, we, we do mutual trainings, we do some things in time, but we do allow them to use the range, but we were, I thought we were supposed to release.
I, I thought the public was supposed to be notified, not only, not only that red flag is supposed to be put on, not everybody drives by that, so.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
Correct, it was supposed to go on the website and their website, uh social media.
And Facebook and.
Yes, and. And I think we were told that it usually happens in September, so that's why I'm surprised that uh, was it September, I thought, uh, but that's a good uh,
It was, it was awful, it was awful, sitting there just listening to gunfire for two days.
Was it, my understanding that.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
It wasn't a weekend though, right, I hope, that.
No, that was during the week.
Yeah, we asked that it not be the weekend.
Yeah.
Retired people, you know.
Yeah.
During the day?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All day.
We were, um, we had asked that a statement be made on the Facebook page before the gun activity were to occur, just to notify people in the area because some people don't drive down there and notice the red flag, so we can uh certainly ensure that that happens going forward, and I thank you for letting us know.
Okay, another thing?
Mm-hmm.
The speed limit signs on Forest Street, where are we at with that? I mean, we did a traffic study in November, uh, two thousand nineteen, I mean, should we go to Congress to get a speed limit sign?
I mean, I'm not sure what effect they'll have on Mass DOT, but it couldn't hurt, but in all seriousness.
Yeah. Aren't we, yeah, aren't we gonna um have a bylaw that we're gonna present at the special uh town meeting in October to grant us permission to set?
To establish speed safety zones, specifically the one that has been discussed, has been for Pleasant Street so far.
Yeah, we, I think I talked to Brett about this, is that the twenty miles an hour?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Uh, you, they're doing, the average speed is forty-one right now, that was that study.
Um, Forest Street, you're talking about, yeah.
And we walk, on Forest Street, and we walk there constantly, and if, you know, I gotta, I'm gonna get an app for my phone, will it tell me the speed, cause a lot of times it's over forty. And to put a twenty mile an hour speed zone there, is that, are you gonna do it?
I don't think that's what you're talking about, you're just asking for speed limit signs for the thirty miles per hour, which I believe is the limit, right?
Right, right.
So we can, if you, if you can put it on the agenda, we can ask Tom, uh, oh Superintendent Ferry is here, was, is he still here? Oh, okay.
Yes, it's a stick. Is there a chance we could put a stop sign in the middle?
That has been dis- that has been discussed before.
We, we discussed that, and we think, we, we think that that may be a problem, yeah, no, we, we discussed that in the past.
Uh-huh.
I missed it.
Uh, we think some studies show that if you put stop signs, then what happens is people stop and then they speed up, actually very fast they get to the left stop sign, so.
Can we put that, I can just circle back to Tom, okay.
Yes. Absolutely.
I do, I do feel personally that it shouldn't be twenty miles per hour on Forest Street.
We should be on the agenda to.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing is, I've noticed, and we've asked the, the chief, uh, please to have more enforcement of this, you know, you can probably speed limit signs up, but if you don't have enforcement, it doesn't make any sense. And I've noticed just the past couple of days, there's been cruises on different streets, uh, so I'm glad that they're out there in the community now and uh hopefully
I've seen a lot too.
give it those uh speeds, I think it's, but uh interesting about Forest Street, when they did that study, and I believe the, uh, the police department had actually stopped some people. Uh, a lot of those people that they stopped for speeding were residents of Forest Street, so that's uh, that's a little bit of the, of the problem there, but that's.
Yeah, uh-uh.
Not me.
Uh, my personal, no, I'm not saying it's you, my personal feeling is that, I don't care where you live, if you're speeding, you should get a ticket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And that's uh, that's how you get that, the message out.
And maybe they'll stop.
Right, but you're correct, that Forest Street was actually brought this to our attention, the old speeding thing was Forest Street, and then we had, was it Eight Streets, uh, I don't have to see it, then we had, uh, seven or eight, and we
Mm-hmm. Seven or eight, yeah, we have a list.
One of us, uh, Forest Street, Pleasant Street, uh, I'm not sure, I think Part of William Street was uh done, Fremont Street.
Correct. Horton.
Horton.
Maple, I believe, yeah.
We only have eight streets.
Yeah, all the main eight streets.
I just heard the other night, there was another marijuana uh discussion that's gonna go on William Street, and they were concerned about the speed on Williams, William Street is, is a nightmare, uh, so.
It, 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 I can't, you can't slow them down, I mean, you know, too, is there's a lot of trucks go through there.
Yeah, I've noticed that.
Yeah, I mean.
Especially with that construction of the house on the corner.
Yeah, well, that's.
On a technically tree mark, yeah.
It was cut, yeah. But it, there's constantly trucks, it's a cut through from the.
From top.
From top, right, yeah.
Correct.
And I mean, it's, maybe there'll be trucks going through there.
Yeah, they fly down there too.
And I've seen, um, uh, for disclosure, I'm involved in the historical side, which is at the center of William Street, I swear there's gonna be accidents almost every day, and a lot of the times, there's big tractor trailers that just come battling down the hill, and uh, if you're leaving center to go on William Street, you know, there's, there's a hill, you may not see it, but they come down so fast, it's, something's gonna happen there, so.
Right, yeah.
So I also want you to know that we have discussed with the, um, just casually with the chief of police, um, we've bandied ideas like dedicating someone to traffic enforcement or having part of someone's dedicated role, traffic enforcement being one of their priorities.
They certainly could earn their own salary, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be much trouble.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you could, you could probably pay for a car with salary for the tickets, maybe then it would slow down.
Yeah, I just know that, I got a com- a commitment from the chief that uh, cause we just hired two police officers, so I said, can we get them out on the streets, cause that's what people are talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there isn't that much crime in that, not that, there isn't crime, but there is, you know, there isn't that much, but speeding is a big issue for a lot of people, and you got young children, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Sluckman help.
We have a very good crowd here this evening, I command you and thank you for your participation in government. And I'm going to throw this out, I don't have an answer, but I welcome your input. I've heard all kinds of discussions about forty, thirty, twenty mile an hour speed limits, and I scratch my head and I say, you could make it ten, but if there's no one to enforce it.
Doesn't matter.
You don't sign there right now at forty and it's not being enforced.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm throwing this out, out for feedback, not because I've drawn an opinion, and I know other communities do quotas. And I'm questioning whether or not a quota system put in place with the police department may not be necessary to get speed under control in this town.
I had a thought regarding that, well, we only have so much money and you have two police officers on duty at any given time in this town. It's what we have. And they have to fight and scratch for every nickel and dime that they get, I understand that their request for sixty-two thousand dollars, was it, correct me if I'm wrong.
It was, for a car.
For another cruiser and some repairs or something, I, I understand that was shot down at the last town meeting.
Forty-five thousand was approved, but yeah, the full, the full total was approved.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was recommended to go with forty-five rather than sixty-two thousand.
Right, and then it's still seventeen chi where they wanted it to be, and probably needed it to be, when you, when you uh
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Look at the individual cruisers and things like that, those things take a beating, they're, they're, they're all local, the brakes are getting shot every uh, every so often. Those, those are city miles, those are hard miles, those vehicles are being driven.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they need more maintenance and, and they need more money for it.
Mm-hmm.
So where does that come from, well, you ask about a quota system, and a quota system, the problem is, is it becomes almost unethical. It really does, it, it draws out the, the worst instincts in people, and one of the things that we don't want is to go from what we have now, which is relative freedom to, you know, this overarching police state. And one of the things that we don't want is to go from what we have now, which is relative freedom, to, you know, this overarching police state where if you drive twenty-one miles an hour in a twenty mile an hour zone, you're gonna get pulled over. Nobody wants that either. So there's there's gotta be some balance, um you know, periodic enforcement should be enough to uh to kind of deter most speeders. But a quota system, it it just it just makes it a police state. I I wouldn't tolerate that for a minute.
Hmm. I think it's all to your point, Selectman Hall, I think it's, and I'm not giving my opinion on a quota, although I do agree with a lot of the points you made, and I think um probably a lot of people will agree with them. But I just think that the reason why people don't, and this has been said at meetings before, the reason why people are less likely to spe- to speed in towns like Berkeley? Is because they have a reputation of being strong on, and I'm not talking about speeding, you know, twenty-one in a twenty, I mean, you know, going thirty in a twenty, you'll probably get pulled over at any point. They come out of nowhere. And I think that it's gonna take some time, but if we can dedicate, so if we can afford, I should be clear, if we can afford to dedicate more resources to traffic enforcement, we should. Cause that will go a long way to having that, in my opinion, reputation that if you speed in this town, you're gonna get pulled over. And I think that is when a word gets out, cause we still live in in a small town where word gets around in that way, then you might see less of that speeding. Just a thought.
And to if I may, um speed grants, they they can apply for it and get extra money to put on an officer from the state in something called the speed grant. I don't I don't know exactly how it works.
Mm-hmm.
But um if if you really wanted that extra enforcement, that's that's all they would really have to do is is apply for a speed grant.
Mm-hmm.
But I I don't know exactly how any of that would work. I I'm sure Chief McDonald was just in the hallway a few minutes ago, he'd be the expert on that.
We can look into that, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. We can definitely discuss it with him.
Yeah, he's here for the executive sessions. That's why we have. Yeah, I also am troubled a little bit with the quotas too, because uh towards the end of the month, if you're doing the monthly, uh then all of a sudden they're gonna be stopping speeders, but you could speed beginning of the month, they're not getting stopped, so. But it's 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 an idea, so it's something we'll we'll discuss. Is there any about?
One more thing.
Robert.
Rob the page on uh six seventy Main Street, Dayton. So I call Main Street, I live there.
Mm-hmm.
Around, let's see, midnight to four o'clock, the Autobahn.
Mm-hmm.
I might be up in the middle of the night and all of a sudden I say flash, flash. I mean, these people are probably going a hundred miles an hour, I'm serious.
Mm-hmm.
And if you had the offices in those nice specific spots right near the bridge and all that, they would make a mint. And another thing, one more thing, there's the there's a relatively new uh forty-five mile an hour sign going up toward towards William Street.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay, fine. There was one on the same s- on the other side going this way towards one thirty-eight that said thirty-five miles an hour, and that mysteriously disappeared. I don't know what happened. It would be wonderful if we could get that one back, because they're going this way the same way. They think it's forty-five and.
Was it, I thought it was I thought it was a thirty.
Did it William Street?
Huh, thirty-five.
I thought it was thirty going into uh one thirty-eight.
Right, when you go up one thirty-eight, of course, up the hill, that's thirty, right, right, we all know that. And then at a certain point, at my house, it becomes, isn't that weird? It's true. It's forty-five, but then on the other side going that way towards the um the library, it's thirty-five, then it goes to thirty at the library.
Mm-hmm.
So that sign across the street from my sign in front of my house is missing, the thirty-five, and I'd love to have someone take care of that somehow, please.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was thirty-five, thirty-five.
And that fifty mile per hour sign on um.
Yes.
William Street had disappeared. Does anyone remember for like months and then it came back, so.
It went off. It appeared magically.
And as.
We can ask about it.
The speed limit.
And if you live on Main Street and I know uh you live on Main Street, it's not a very good road, so imagine once it's paved, what it's gonna be like.
Oh, we should address it before.
It's like it's like Starship's flying by my house. I'm telling you, it's an alien, so I'm like, it's that fast.
It's like that on Forest Street too.
Yeah, okay, right.
Well, I'm impressed that you're up at midnight, because I haven't seen midnight in such a long time, so.
I'm a musician, what do you expect?
Are there any other uh questions?
Oh, one of it, um it's concerned with a question.
Oh, comments I should say, yeah, yeah, I shouldn't have said question, any comments?
Regarding the Zoom feeds and everything like that, so I I don't think it's much of a secret that, you know, we um wanna see Lenny up there and everything in all his glory. Not not that we don't wanna see you guys either.
I get it, no offense.
We don't wanna see ourselves either.
We like to see um la- at the last meeting you guys had on Zoom, we couldn't see Lenny, we couldn't hear him.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um I I could hear Brett just fine, I could hear Ken just fine, but I couldn't hear Lenny. And um Mr. Mullin, I could hear you now and then, so.
The better it was.
Did we have that panoramic camera for that meeting?
So we think we we think we recti- we think we rectify that, uh.
No, yes, we did.
We did.
Do you? Okay.
We think we did. The other day we had uh we did a sample Zoom, it was me and it was uh Robert Woods, and it was a third, I forget who the third person was. Uh at home, Jonathan Gale, at home on Zoom, and they did different things with the volume and stuff like that, and we were able, there was a little bit of an echo, uh but with exception to that, I we could hear people in different spots.
Jonathan Gale.
Can you can you do like a m- a microphone between each of you?
Yeah.
We used to have one, what happened last time?
We 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 have one microphone and and something of our.
It was only one last time, he didn't have one.
Mm-hmm.
Does it not interface with Zoom? Is that a problem?
That is that is the microphone that interfaces with Zoom, he didn't have one.
I that that is Zoom, but I uh listen, the cable didn't reach, doesn't reach Lenny or something, kind of.
So yeah, like.
So they put it over here and it doesn't reach him.
Yeah.
So yeah, there's a few things. And number one, with regards to the microphone that was used at the I'm at the last meeting. Uh uh that mic is set up, I'm I'm act- I'm act- actually to the new technology on top of the TV. Um in the last four days, we've been working a lot on this issue, because we understand that it's a major issue. And uh like what we have found is, I'm a few things. Number one, uh they actually ha- they actually have additional microphones, which we can order. Uh it's like, oh, so each member of the board of selectmen is able to have their own dedicated mic to get their audio. Um uh yeah, like so like we're already on top of that.
But I thought we already, we had these microphones that, and I didn't mean to cut you off, but I I was just under the impression, they one sat here, and then he had one, and then Len, uh excuse me, Selectman Hall had one as well.
Yeah.
So what happened to those? Cause we already had a solution.
You left one over there, there's there was, there was two.
Yes.
There were at least two, yeah, I thought there were three.
Yeah, so the original.
I feel like Barbara right now, solving this.
So the original auxiliary microphones, they don't actually interface with uh with the new f- with the new platform, oh, you know, that we brought to the show the program.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
However, in the past, however, in the past day and a half, based on the testing that we did, I think yesterday, we also like have found out, I believe, what is actually the root of the issue. Like in the root of the issue, uh uh like actually goes, uh you know, like uh like it goes to like a Comcast issue. Uh uh like uh like uh uh like actually where the bandwidth of our wireless, uh like over the Zoom. Uh you know, like it basically exhausts itself, like and causes way more feedback. Uh you know, than necessary, and that's why when we do the individual test, everything works like absolutely perfect, but then when everyone's logged on. Uh uh you through Comcast, everything basically overloads our bandwidth. So like in talking with our in talking with our IT administrator, he has already set up a way for the fiber that, uh like is in Town Hall. Uh to cross over the complex and into Old Town Hall, so we can set up directly to that fiber.
Cause I noticed it slows down, and then and then it speeds up, and then everybody sounds like Alvin the Chipmunks, when in the room that we're in.
Uh yes, but if we plug in now to the fiber rather than logging on, oh, you know, like act, oh, oh, you know, like, oh, like actually. Uh actually through Comcast wireless, we should knock on would be good, and that's what we're gonna, I like actually plan to do, because.
Was there a timetable on that thing that can possibly possibly be done?
Um I believe the fiber is already there and we just, Alec, and we just have to make sure we're plugging into it, just from what I understand, exactly.
Utilizing it. Um we had a call the other day, um during the day, and um I was, I couldn't come to Old Town Hall, and I had to do the meeting over Zoom, everybody else was at Old Town Hall. Um and I could hear everyone. It was a little tough with the audience, because if you're not at a microphone, it just, it sounds a little bit echoey. But um to address your point about not being able to see Selectman Hall, I think that's because we sit at a straight desk, and you can see obviously my big head and you can see Ken. But he gets um, you can't see you, because we're all sitting in a straight line, so maybe for the next meeting, we could just slightly move the table. Not a lot, just like a little bit this way, so that we're sitting like this and not like this, and then you would be able to see everyone. Just a thought.
Cause there's the cameras like over here, there's a TV.
The camera's right there, would be right there on the wall.
TV and the cameras above it, so it's gonna catch, this is why Brett actually asked for this spot, uh he gets Brett for us, me, and then currently. Play musical chairs, so we can all learn.
I've been very patient about that. You should support this.
Yeah, yeah. I've I've heard that they didn't hear me and you, I've heard that uh in the past, the way we're, cause the microphone was kind of over there.
Sweet big, sweet big numbers or something. Yes.
Um.
I've I don't like Zoom to be, if I could be honest, I don't like Zoom, I prefer this, quite frankly, uh but while we have Zoom, we can deal with it. You, I'm sorry, interrupt you.
No, no, I. I had requested the second microphone.
Mm-hmm.
I understand there is an interface problem. I also wonder if um. A booster to the internet at the Old Town Hall would help strengthen the signal.
Do you know what might also help is a stern call to that our governmental affairs rep at Comcast, I forget his name, I will get that contact information. And let him know that we're having difficulty streaming our live, so this isn't like a resident calling who wants to watch more Netflix, this is, you know.
Yeah, no, this is important.
Yeah.
Yep, I would do that, I'll be stern.
And let them know, cause maybe he's not aware that our our bandwidth is not sig- is not sufficient to have a public meeting. It doesn't make any sense, there's no reason.
A bandwidth is awful.
So um I believe his name is Mike, I will get that and we can call him.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm, good points.
Is there any more uh public, uh Rafa, Delphine?
Um a couple of days ago, the Toronto Minister is uh publishing an article about the possibility of Dayton police applying for this month. What is your uh?
Yes, I I brought it up at the uh the the last meeting, last uh, the last meeting we had was the proclamation for great uh gay pride month, and I brought it up that I'm thinking of, I'm seriously thinking of bringing it. Uh before the board of selectmen to vote on, it will be a public hearing, it will probably not be in a little room like this, possibly at the school, one of the schools, and people will have input on it, and they can for or against. Uh so just from uh so you know what my position is, uh I'm not talking about putting a gay pride flag on our flagpole out there, which has the American flag and the P O W M I A flag. I would uh prefer not a separate flagpole either, uh but if you walk into the building to the uh where the door is to the right, there's a bench and then there's a wall, and I would ask, you know. I would support putting a gay pride flag in June uh on that uh the building there, so. I haven't decided, we've, I've talked to our town administrator, we're thinking about the logistics of having the public hearing. I will then bring it back to the board to decide whether or not this is the way we wanna proceed, as well as the date and all that kind of stuff and the place, and then uh it'll be, the public will be made aware of it.
So every, excuse me. I'm sorry, it may it may not be displayed this month at all.
It's not gonna be, no, it's not gonna be displayed, no, it's it's not gonna be di- uh displayed this month if, I'm part of the Human Rights uh Com- uh Commission, I'm the liaison person for the board of selectmen.
It's not gonna be displayed this month.
We discussed this maybe in February or March. I didn't think we should do it this year this quickly, there needs to be conversations, and uh so that's why I've I've asked the board that we. I presented to the board that we're gonna have a public hearing so that people can come and express their their position on it, but it's it's definitely not gonna come up, uh definitely won't be on. We won't have time to have that here.
Has there been arguments going on back there for the social media, satellite, like when is it gonna stop?
Yeah, well, hopefully it stops when we actually have the the vote, but I I hear what you're saying, I I see the same stuff on 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 Facebook, so. Uh just so you know, it will not be this month. Uh I will present it within the next couple of months, we'll have a hea- uh a hearing on it, and people can uh voice for or against, and then the board will uh. I feel strongly that the board should be able to make that decision, that we're elected by, not necessarily elected by some of you, but we're elected by the the residents of town, and we should be able to uh have the courage to make a decis- uh decision on that. Uh Mr. White.
So I listened in on the Human Rights um Committee, and I remem- I recall you saying we shouldn't go forward with this because of the animosity that it causes.
Yeah.
And I think if we're gonna run up to a vote, we're just gonna, we're a divided country right now. We don't need any more division, and we have our Stars and Stripes and, and you know, our flag. Which is, according to our constitution, recognizing everybody, whatever religion, whatever race, whatever color, whatever creed. And why would we go with it? Something that is going to further cause division and finger pointing and um name-calling and, you know. We've we've been fine with it as we are, and maybe what we need to do is start honoring what our founding fathers said that flag means, and it does represent everybody.
My major in in college was history, and that's not what the founder, that flag did not represent all of Americans. It represented whites, Protestants, and landowners. That's who it, that's who it represented, so it didn't, it didn't represent the slaves, it is true, study of history, it didn't represent slaves, and right now. The L B G T Q community is being discriminated against.
Prove them, just say it. I think you can't prove them.
There's a lot, there's far more acceptance now.
Absolutely.
And and there has ever been. I think we've made huge strides both on um people of color, um L G B T Q, um it it this this far, it's far better than it's ever been. And this seems to be a a a rock in the shoe to just cause division. And I think you were right when you said that at the Human Rights um Committee meeting, that going forward with this is probably more detrimental than positive.
I think what I said, I I don't have my exact quote, but at at that time, I didn't think it was appropriate to uh, but we're gonna have that public hearing, we're gonna have that discussion, people can express whatever their opinions are on this.
I think we can avoid the the devices.
I I would hope that that doesn't divide the town, because, you know, small town with a big pot, that's. But it's also divided those that support putting the the flag up, so it's uh uh Slackman Hall.
I've said it it over and over again. I totally think it is unfair to spotlight and to put L B G T Q in the in the in the crosshairs. This isn't about them. It's about all groups in this community. It's about African Americans. It's about the Native Americans. Why aren't we coming up, if we're going to come up, with an all-inclusive policy? That if written and written well, would include L B G T Q. So this discussion isn't about them, it's about all groups. What is going to be accepted? What isn't going to be accepted? I I think it's, it has divided the town, but it has put the gay community in an unfavorable situation. That the spotlight is on them.
In a negative way.
I haven't lived in this town for over thirty years, and I've seen the discrimination and the vandalism and the out-and-out destruction. And the driving out of Native Americans from this very, from the that building, from their powwow. And services out there on that track.
Right, which had nothing to do.
To the desecration of their burial ground right behind my house.
Right, good fuck, right.
If we wanna talk about disrespect, there is a lot more documented discrimination against the Native Americans in this town. And anything that I've heard with L B G T Q in this town. And to be honest with you, an all-inclusive policy brings a lot more support. Because, and I get really uncomfortable because it's spotlighting L B G T Q, they're a small group, but there is strength and there is wisdom. With all of the stakeholders coming together and having input in an all-inclusive policy. That is written in such a way that it includes all the shareholders. that is written in such a way that it includes all the shareholders. So we're not talking about LGBTQ. We're talking about policy that is encompassing them and other groups. Am I frustrated? They did it in Taunton, and they did it very well. So, and they're willing to help us if we wanted to go that way.
Well, I've stated my position. Yep.
So, we were talking about division, and the statements you had made, Mr. Swakman, are very divisive. You know, my father, was a World War II veteran. He stood up against Hitler. That old generation did, under that flag. And all three of my folks did the same thing. Absolutely. And there are guys in this room, yours truly included, who put on that uniform and swore that oath, and it hasn't expired. And that oath wasn't to white Protestant. I'm not a Protestant, you know, um. It's, the American flag is inclusive of everyone. Did we have a rough start? Absolutely. I was a history major myself. One of the benefits I had in my education was learning logic from Jesuits. Jesuits are brilliant at logic. And the, the if that argument, the slippery slope is an absolutely valid argument that, okay, this month, we're going to have the gay pride flag. Next month, what's to stop some lunatic from defending? He wants the Confederate flag out there. The month after that, why not a swastika? Or the hammer and sickle are the most murderous regime in history, the Chinese Communist.
Are you comparing, comparing the gay pride flag to the Nazi flag?
No, but what I am comparing, what I am comparing is it's a narrow, it's a narrow special.
Confederate flag. If we're gonna put a Confederate flag out there, it should be a white flag, a surrender flag.
You have one flag, and that one flag is the red, white, and blue. It's flying out there now. That's the inclusive flag. Not all of these other flags. What's to stop us from flying just any flag? A Gadsden flag, this hundreds, that hundreds, there's hundreds out there. We've got one. We've got more important things to talk about, right? You talked about speeding, you talked about the library, you talked about some really important things, and I was with you on a lot of that stuff. But when you start going off in that direction, man, I can't support you. I can't be there. So, that's where we're at.
I think it's an important issue. You talked about, was it your grandfather in World War II?
No, my father.
Your father. You remember the service, the, the blacks were segregated? They weren't allowed to be with whites?
That wasn't right.
What? Oh, absolutely, it wasn't right. And it was President Truman who corrected, corrected that. But there are times in our history uh, when people have been discriminated against, and we have to acknowledge that. I know there's some people don't, don't think that our kids or the students should be taught this stuff, but this is our history, good or bad. We're always
Absolutely.
We're always, well, most of the time, we're moving forward. We're correcting the mistakes that we made in the past, the way we treated uh, Native Americans, the way we, we've treated blacks in America.
How about, how about the way FDR treated the Japanese? He rounded them up and put them in concentration camps.
Absolutely. That was, that was disgusting. You and I went around, but that's, that's, that's history.
That's what I'm talking about. So it's, it's that kinda division. We need to get past that crap. And just, red, white, and blue, that's our flag and a discussion. And, and let's get on to the more important things, the actual business of governing our tiny little charming town, Mayberry.
There is also full of speeders. There is also another concern that I have, of putting any flag before a policy, and that is lawsuits. Not just the risk and the expense of paying a judgment if we discriminate against a group, cause I can think of a couple controversial groups that are national groups, that have lawyers on retainer, that have no problem suing the town. But if you take a look at our budget, on the town budget for two thousand twenty-two, there is no money budgeted for attorney's fees for lawsuits. And I'm gonna have a very difficult time supporting, paying a lawyer to defend against those lawsuits. Because people that are, wanna go this direction, you've been so on, you will be sued. The town of Dayton will, not may be sued, will be sued. So, we better stop budgeting legal fees for that.
May I?
A solid policy might prevent that.
Dr. Z?
Yeah, so, just a couple things. So we actually never fund that settlements, I believe it's a settlements um, line, we have a town council line, and the reason is, we as a board have felt it's more fair to bring those items via special article to the town meeting, and have the voters decide if that's what we should be using the monies, which is probably where that power should be. I also wanna say, um, I'm not aware, and everybody knows how I feel about this issue, I really don't have anything more to add about it, um, but that I'm not aware of any town in the Commonwealth that is currently flying an LGBTQ pride flag that has been sued.
They have a par- Washington has a parlor.
Bridgewater doesn't.
Is there any other?
Yeah, the, just the fact that this conversation, not Dylan M- Dylan Mullin.
Yep.
Uh, the fact that this conversation keeps on coming up repeatedly.
I didn't bring it up tonight, but I hear what you're saying.
No, but, but it does, we're, we're talking about it. Uh, people are concerned about it. Uh, it's a lack of focus. So you did mention that you were elected to make decisions true, but for town business. And this topic is personal politics. So, it's a misuse of the power that the public has provided you. And it's a waste of resources for the town. So, we're wasting time, resources, money, talking about issues related to personal politics. It's, it's actually shameful that we've been talking about this for months. And you've changed your mind, you know, you, you've also flip-flopped your opinion on this for some reason, which I'm, I'm not clear.
Yeah, well, some, some of us wouldn't call it flip-flopping. Some of us, I, I would hate to think that my opinions when I was ten years old is the same opinions I have now. And I, I grow, I read, I'm educated, so I'm willing to change my opinions, and I wasn't shy about it. I didn't go on Facebook and just type something up, this is my new opinion. I presented it at a public hearing, and I'm discussing it now, and we'll have another public hearing to discuss this whole issue, that the residents of this town can come in and ask any questions, say whatever statements they, they wish to say. So I don't, I don't consider it uh, flip-flopping. I did feel strongly at that time uh, that it shouldn't be brought up, and I wanted to get back, buy this gay pride month, uh, but I think it's an issue that we can resolve one way or the other, that we should resolve as a town. So. Any other comments, questions?
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming up and letting us know how you feel.
I prefer this than Zoom, so.
Or Facebook.
Oh, it's nice to hear everybody's voice.
Right.
And see your faces.
It's very mass.
See your faces.
Unmasked.
Yeah.
So if there is no other further public input, I'll again ask for that motion. Uh.
Uh, entertaining?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into uh, executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Number Three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares negotiations with Dayton Police Officers Mask Cop three oh six.
Second, and I so declare, we will not be returning uh, back to a, a, a public uh, meeting. I wanna thank everybody for, for coming here. We're meeting next week, next Wednesday. And over there, we can hold a hundred people, so we can hold, have more people come if they wish. Uh, so, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I can have a real roll, roll call. Selectman Hall, Dr. Z, and Campachico's also an aye. Thank you very much.
Aye. Aye.